Okay.
Lyndon, my aunt.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal.
We'll open the large prayer, in name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And this is not to temptation, but to the rest. The base of fact of the pledge allegiance, our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rocco.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot. Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Dee Dee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Item one, public comment. At this time, I ask you to put your phones on vibrate or silent. And do we have any comment cards?
Nope.
Then we're moving on to item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes of March 6, 2023, which will be published on April 4, 2023.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and a second, uh, I don't know who got the second. Uh, Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you. Two B.
Acceptance of the minutes of March 21, 2023, which will be published on April 4, 2023.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Wow. A motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second, uh, Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed?
Yeah.
Good. I didn't know. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machine. Thanks again. All right. Three A.
Amendment to ordinance number 2023 dash oh three, an ordinance declaring certain new Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to Arnville Police Department or any other agency at a cost not less than $17,000 in accordance with state law.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed and a second by, uh, Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
So move.
Second.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Thank you. Three B.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 10, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, of its taxable sewer revenue bond, bond DEQ, in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any public comment? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
So move.
Motion.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and, uh, Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Thank y'all very much. Uh, three C.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 11, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement and conveyance by and between the City of New Iberia, Iberia Parish Government, Iberia Parish Recreation and Playground Commission, and Segura Properties LLC for the purchase of a parcel of property.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none. Motion to close.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and Councilwoman.
Your pleasure.
Thank you. It's like she's so rare, you know? Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Uh, like I want to say it, watch. Uh, three D.
Uh, special ordinance number 2022 dash 2023 dash 16, amendment number 15, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect purchase of property for Acadian Acres Detention Pond.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none. Motion to close.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Thank y'all. Okay. Four A.
Amendment to ordinance number 2023 dash oh three, an ordinance declaring certain new Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to Arnville Police Department or any other agency at a cost not less than $17,000 in accordance with state law.
I need a motion.
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 Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you. PD will be happy. Four B.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 10, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, of its taxable sewer revenue bond, DEQ, in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilman David Broussard. And we have Jason Akers here. Hello, sir.
Uh, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Jason Akers with the full of Udel. Uh, I'll be very brief because you've actually done this two other times within recent memory in 2013 and 2018. Uh, this ordinance authorizes the issuance of bonds secured solely by the sewer revenues. They'll be on a parity with those 2013 and 2018 bonds, which means that your revenues each year are going to be sufficient or have to be sufficient to make the payments of debt service on the new bonds and the old outstanding bonds. But these are at a low fixed rate, point nine five percent. That's zero point nine five percent, um, which means that that's really going to control your borrowing costs. It would be spread out over a 20-year period. This is also done on a drawdown basis, so only as funds are necessary to pay project costs are funds advanced. And then only when funds are advanced, you start to pay interest on them. So it's a very good program that's run by the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality for the benefit of your sewer system. And, um, as I said, you've done it before. We'll take this ordinance, file it with DEQ, and we'll begin the closing process and hope to have funds available to you uh, by the end of this state fiscal year, which is June 30. So our anticipation is closing by that point. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, comments?
He always looks this way.
I just like to look around.
Yeah, right.
Anybody have any questions?
I do have a question.
Oh, well, please feel free.
I was just going to ask, how much time do we have to pay the bond off?
It'll be over a 20-year period once principal starts amortizing, which would start within two years of the date of issue. So it's a total maximum 22-year term.
Okay.
And you can also pay it off early at any time should you decide that the point nine five percent interest rate is too high for some reason.
I don't think we'll be doing that.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Jason, for what you do, what I appreciate.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here.
Good. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Uh, hearing and seen none. I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right. Four C.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 11, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement and conveyance by and between the City of New Iberia, Iberia Parish Government, Iberia Parish Recreation and Playground Commission, and Segura Properties LLC for the purchase of a parcel of property.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
So this is for the?
This is the property that will be the detention pond, uh, which is on, uh?
For Acadian Acres.
For Acadian Acres, correct.
Correct.
On the highway. Yes, sir. I saw Jeff ask.
We have, yeah, there's some other parties to this agreement, but it's all set forth in the, uh, agreement that's in the packets. And I think that's going to be real close to the final form. We might have some little tinkering to deal with. But the city gets 9.172 acres in the front and 4.505 acres in the back, so that's what we're acquiring.
It's an extensive agreement.
Yeah.
What's that?
It was an extensive agreement reading.
Yeah, yeah. It's complicated.
It's very complicated.
Bunch of peo- bunch of parties to it, yeah.
There are no buildings on?
Yes, there, yes, ma'am, there is. We'll have a building and we're retaining some parking to go with that building. It's not a very large building. Uh, we're going to be able to, you know, find a use for that building, and I hope we do. My main motivation is to help and alleviate the flooding in Acadian Acres.
Right.
And this is the only piece of property they can do it because we'll drain to, uh, from Acadian Acres to our detention pond and then out through the M10 to the Bayou Tesh. But the bonus, I, I look at it as a bonus, is that we will pick up a, a small building. And the way we've got it laid out, we've reserved some area around that building for parking. So I'm, I'm hoping and I'm pretty sure between this council and myself, we'll find a use for that little building.
Okay. How long has the building been there? I mean, are we going to have any issues with electric, electrical?
No, I walked through it once and it's, because the door was unlocked.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
Uh, it's, uh, it's been locked since then, but it's probably 15 years old. I mean, but it's, it's updated enough that we're not going to be, and it's a metal building. So we're not going to be changing electrical panels as we've had to do with all our buildings. We're not going to have, uh, any kind of asbestos or, you know, I think it's a, a solid little building.
Okay, that's good. I just want to see if that's going to be extra money we have to spend to kind of make it functional.
I understand. And that'll depend on whatever use we come up with.
Right.
Anybody else?
Right, and I know it's, it's in Acadian Acres. Which, which street is it off? I never took a ride.
It's off the.
It's off of Jane Street.
It's off of Jane, off the highway.
You can see it off of, from Jane Street?
Yeah, it's, it's.
It used to be the Echo Drive-In?
It, it's the old golf driving range.
And then the golf drive-in.
And if you're old enough, it's the old Echo Drive-In.
Yeah, I, I remember that.
I do.
So the little building is right up there on Jane Street, right before Sam Broussard's place, Sammy Broussard Trucking, yeah.
Yeah.
So how, how long before we get started on this and they can see some relief? I don't know if that here, but.
Right. Finister maker's handling that project and we're setting a meeting up with Finister Maker, uh, to try to get this kicked off. We have 1.9 million in our, uh, budget. We did see, because it didn't come up till a week and a half ago, and we're kind of trying to push Finister Maker to see if it's possible. We have 1.9 in the budget, but the state has some money. So we, of course, it goes by census tracts and there's a lot of hurdles to jump. I'm not even sure if the area will qualify. But we're setting a meeting up with them next week. We tried this week and our schedules just didn't let it happen. Because if I could leverage some, get some of that money, well then, we would free up some of that 1.9 to, to do something else. If not, we, I think we have enough. The original budget was 1.1, but it's a very old budget. So we'll at least be able to do phase one, but it's something I want to move on quick. But quick for a project this size, you know, you're not going to be moving dirt for
Yeah.
six months probably.
Right.
Eight months, something like that.
Okay. But at least they know it's coming.
Yeah, and it's a long time coming. It's been, uh, Larry offered us this property and I have to thank the parish president for that. Uh, probably a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago.
Two years.
Probably two years ago, and it's been, uh, quite the adventure to get to the point we're at.
Excellent. Okay.
Anybody else? Then, uh, they asked you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Wish Brooke was here tonight. She, uh?
That's why I asked the question.
Oh, I know. I know. She's good.
That's why I made the motion.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's all good. And I know she wishes she could be here, so. Uh, four D.
Special ordinance number 2022 dash 2023 dash 16, amendment number 15, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect purchase of property for Acadian Acres Detention Pond.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal. Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Uh, Councilman Marlon Lewis, any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. All right. Resolutions five A.
Resolution number 23 dash 30, rejecting the bids for the Bank Avenue Park Renovations American Rescue Plan Act project.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. And, uh, we have, uh, our architect David Ollin here. Tell us why we can't take this bid.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, last Wednesday, we accepted bids for the Bank Avenue renovation project, Orpa project. All bids are taken under advisement. Um, and so when we received the bids, uh, one of the contractors after the bid opening told us that they had a mathematical error. They were the apparent low bidder. The error was in their alternate number three. They left off a zero. They're $100,000 off. It's substantial, so, uh, they couldn't honor their bid. And so they had to formally withdraw from the, uh, from the bidding consideration. Then the next low bidder would have been Menville Lumber Company. With all of the alternates considered in the project, they were over the budget by $100,000. So at this point, we decided that it's best to reject the bids and rebid the project because of the overage on the budget. We did have alternates established, but we considered and recommended all these alternates be considered into the project because they're, uh, important for the, the refurbishment and restoration and preservation of this pavilion. We have rust we have to deal with. We have a floor that's peeling and it's not safe. And so we have these items that we really want to keep in the project. So that's why we were, um, consi- you know, making the recommendation to keep those in, um, as they move forward. So, uh, we will have to rebid the project. And these contractors that have already bid on it are eager to sharpen their pencils and hopefully give us some better prices.
And the contractor that backed out, well, by law, he can't bid on it. But talking to him, he, if he had gotten, if he had put his zero where he would have, he still wa- he wanted the job. He thought it would have been a good job had he had that other hundred in. So that tells me that we should be able to get new bids and be in the money and get everything. We would shortchange ourselves, I thought, if we say, well, cut this, cut that, just to do part of the project. So by going out for rebid, but to, you know, I, I think that we will get some prices that will be in the budget and let us do everything we need to do. Or very close. I mean, we, I don't mind a small overage because a few of the Orpa projects have come under a little bit. With a little work on Laney's part, we could adjust, but not 100,000 at this early stage. But, uh, looking for it. And when, can you give us a schedule, when, uh, when we'll go back out?
Well, as soon as we get the green light from you guys, we'll go right back out.
That's fine. That's what I was hoping.
It could be next week.
Okay.
Everything goes approved.
Sixty days? Well, I know, I know Deidre's going to ask me that.
We, we just have to advertise it. Usually we get the day libera in about a week to get our advertisement. And then the bidding period's 25 days.
Yeah. Okay.
So technically, we don't have alternates. We want everything in the project.
Right. We, we, you don't know. In other words, at this point, we want everything in the project. If we bid again and they're not, those alternates become a safety valve that you, you can say, well, I guess I could do without this. But at this point, I, I don't want an alternate. I'd like to see everything done.
Okay.
Anybody else?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one more question from a process from our side. Is there any chance that maybe, um, the bids might not come back within budget? I mean, did we budget too low? I mean, are we?
Well, our other two projects came in within budget and, you know, we costed those out all at the same time. Uh, so, and you just don't know. It depends on, every project is so different with what we're doing. It depends on how the contractor's mindset is. If they don't have a lot of work, they might do something they normally don't do. If it's a little messy and it's got some work involved that they're not, they just say, you know, that might go well for 10 grand. I'm going to put 30 just to see because it's messy. So you can bid the same job and, and get a new cast of, you know, contractors and the bids come in totally different. It's, it's, the way the market is right now, you, you, you just don't know. But I, I think, I feel pretty good because our other jobs came in the money. And a couple of other jobs that weren't Orpa jobs lately have been in the money. So I'm feeling pretty good that I think we budgeted enough money.
Okay.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
So after we rebid with 30 days or so.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how long to start?
Well, we usually go through about a two-week process of making a recommendation, getting on the council, going through that deal. And then we have to get some information from the contractor.
Bonds, insurance.
Uh, bonds and insurance and, and things like that, sign the contracts, and then gives them a little bit of time, mobilize. So it's roughly like three to four weeks after the bid opening, I'd probably say dirt's turned.
So about 60 days?
Too much.
Yeah.
Too much.
I think maybe sixty days.
Okay.
From rebid to, you know, boots on the ground.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe June, you know, sometime in June, so, say July, just to be sure.
So the pavilion and all that's going to be shut down during that time period?
Um, haven't really thought about that too much. Uh, when they do the coating system for sure, because that's the whole floor system.
Yeah.
You know, it really needs it.
Yes.
We'll probably have to isolate some of the pavilion.
Yeah, they'd have to co- yeah.
Because we do have some areas that are doing some substantial demolition to that, that internal structure. And we don't want any dangerous situations there. Um, but we could work with the contractor and, and you guys to figure out, you know, the best, uh, scope for that.
Yeah, it's just that it's going to be summertime and so the kids are going to be out of school, so you don't have more.
Basketball.
Yeah, more kids out there playing, so you might want to shut it down, um, during that time period.
Yeah, safety is a big concern, especially in parks. You know, there, it gets, the, the equipment and things like that, you know, you just don't want any dangerous situations.
Right.
So they're usually aware of that, for sure.
Anybody else?
David, you said coating?
Yes.
Co- what are you coating it, coating it with?
Uh, it's a, an epoxy coating that is able to withstand weather, UV. Um, it's a, really enhances and infuses basically to the concrete surface. So it, it's a longevity, um, and maintenance goal, you know, try to prevent those kind of issues in the future. So it has anti-slip quality to it as well.
I know that's a good point.
That, that's one of the smoothest concrete slabs in New Iberia right there.
I drew a plan on that, on that.
It is slick, yeah. Get a little water on it and.
Yeah.
You don't need tennis shoes. Bring your dancing shoes to play basketball.
So, and that's all going to be repainted?
Correct.
Yeah, because you can't hardly see the lines anymore.
It's a big minute of finish, so you'll be able to repaint everything.
Excellent. Okay.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right. Five B.
Resolution number 23 dash dash 31, awarding contract to Patriot General Construction LLC for the MLK Center improvements for Boys and Girls Club, American Rescue Plan Project, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Any discussion? Uh, well, I'll call on you, Dave, first.
All right, so this is Patriot General Contracting. These guys bid it on two of our projects. So, um, they were actually able to get this one into the budget and they're the apparent low bidder. So we're ma- making the recommendation to award them the project. They're a little over 5,000 under the budget, uh, and that's with all three add alternates into the, to the project as well. Which is good, so we can, uh, if y'all don't know much about the project, it's enhancing the teen center side of the MLK Center um, for the Boys and Girls Club. We're repainting, and we're putting new ceiling, new lighting, um, a new security vestibule. Um, you know, really trying to make it enhanced for the, the organization to come in.
So any.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, in about, I mean, they're like $40,000 less than everybody else.
No, ma'am.
Okay. I mean, that just seems like a.
It happens. I know. And we have this discussion quite often and the jobs go, you know?
I know.
Construction's a gamble. I never had to go to Vegas. I gambled every job I did. Uh, it, it's how it is. I mean, you know, and one contractor could have one subcontractor different or have some loyalty built up or everybody else used the local prices and he brought in a ringer. And he looked like, I don't know how he's going to do it, and, you know, they, they, and they're bonded. You know, the other thing is, is that they, they have a bond, so we have a performance bond. If something happened, we would call in the bonding company, but no, I mean, it's, I've been in that position a whole lot of times and, you know, you, you, you cry a little bit about the money you left on the table and then you move on and make what you can. That's the game.
All right. I just hope it's not.
I know.
What you pay for.
No, I mean, well, that's why, that's why you have specs, you have plans, you have an architect, you do site inspections, and you got a bond.
Okay.
I didn't say it's always easy to get what you got to get, but at the end, we'll get what we got to get.
And we can't do it any other way.
No, and yes, public bid. And, and really by law, you know, this conversation is mute because by law.
But I mean, this is like the first time I've seen this contractor on any of our paperwork.
Yeah, they're out of Texas.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Patriot.
Patriot. So it's just, um.
I know, but there's nothing you can do.
We don't know, I mean.
I thought it was the Patriot on the highway, but, uh, and I thought that was far. And then I found out, you know, and those are where, I don't know, Karen Crowe or something? And then I found out it was from Texas, but I mean, you know.
Okay.
The laws we have to abide by.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is that roof totally sealed?
From what we were told, it was. Now, we have some rain events coming up this weekend, so.
And we're going to check, but they changed the roof.
Keep an eye on that, for sure.
They've been waiting and, and we've been, they did everything else on the roof and didn't have those standing seam roof panels. They finally got them. They changed them. They put them in. I, I think we good, but we, we're going to monitor for sure.
So we got a totally renovated roof now?
So.
They're in the process of completing it. Now, that side that we were told was finished.
Okay.
So that's the area where this construction's happening.
Right.
That's the area where the rain was coming in.
Correct.
Yeah. So we'll play pickleball Monday. We won't see any.
Yeah, good. Let me know. Call me.
Um, so the other thing is they were actually, today I was at the repass at the West End and they were, I guess, pressure washing the, the roof.
Correct.
So somebody might want to go check and see if the water came through that.
They're going to be recoating it like they did at Seer Gates.
Okay.
Yeah, they got to clean it to coat it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, water was coming down.
Nobody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right. Five C.
Resolution number 23 dash 32, awarding contract to Menville Lumber Company Incorporated for the renovations to West End Park, American Rescue Plan Act Project, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsal. Uh, David?
All right, so this is for the renovations to the West End Park. This is the Park Grounds project, whereas MLK was the, the center itself. So, uh, Menville Lumber Company is the apparent low bidder and we're making a recommendation to award them the contract um, for 360,400. Um, they were under the budget by, uh, about 3,000, and that's with all three add alternates into the project. Oh, excuse me.
Deidre, you got eight thousand.
One, one of them was not, sorry, one of them was not added into the project.
Yeah, that's why I'm like looking at.
Yeah, the, the concrete sidewalks was not added. If it, if we would have taken that, it would have gone over the budget, so we, we kept it under.
Okay. I was wondering.
No, sometime we have to make, we'll find another way to put those sidewalks in.
Right.
You know, and again, we keeping track of all of this because we do have a little pot of money that we're not gonna commit till the end, and it might be, you know, we'll bring it, we'll do like we always do, and we all work well together. It might be filling in gaps of parts of projects that didn't get done, it might be, well, maybe we don't need that, let's do another project, and we'll all agree on it, but, uh, or something that is, you know, good for the whole town, if we, if we, you know, something new and different that, that works for everybody, but we'll figure that out at the end. But, uh, we keeping track, and I am trying to keep them as close to the budget as I can, so that we do have that little kinda cushion.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What, uh, just for a public reminder, which projects does this, this consist of?
So, what we're gonna do is refurbish the tennis courts, recode them, new nets. Lighting is already new, fencing has been updated, um, so it'll be a really fresh new tennis court. Uh, the baseball diamond is gonna get, uh, the dugout's gonna get redone, the infield's gonna get reworked, some new clay, make it look like a baseball field again. The fences that are, are damaged from the storms will be repaired. All the fencing is gonna get recoded with galvanized coating, so hopefully all that rust will be gone, it'll look a lot better. Um, the back outfield fence lines are gonna come down, so they're gonna be open to the athletic field. Uh, that fence is gonna be relocated along the railroad tracks to create a barrier for safety purposes along the whole property line from Park Elementary to the, the tree grove. Um, and then the sports lighting is gonna get upgraded, so we're gonna do new poles, new LED lighting, uh, eight poles around that whole athletic, uh, turf area.
That's awesome.
Yep.
And we would've had enough money to do the sidewalks, but the poles were, after inspecting, the poles were much, at the bottom, they looked pretty good.
Yeah, they were rotten at the top.
But they were rotten at the top, and so, once somebody, you know, went up there and checked them, we were like, okay, we gotta make a decision, but I really want to leave that ball field, that it is a ball field when we leave, okay? Uh, so, the sidewalks, we'll find a way to do it. If we can't, you know, maybe we'll lean on Public Works to do them. Uh, there's always an option, you know?
And is the tennis court getting lighting, uh, new lighting, more, more lighting?
Not more lighting, uh, we were told that the lighting was fixed recently.
Right, right.
Um, but we weren't adding additional lighting to it, so, not, um, sure how the lighting levels are right now. So.
Jeff?
I see Patriots' name in the resolution, twenty-three thirty-two, is that correct?
Whoops. Yeah. Sorry. I fixed it.
Right, so that, that should be Menville, where it says Patriot everywhere.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
I'll ask that question later.
Okay. All good? And so, we know to switch that to Menville. Okay. Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all.
This is exciting.
It is. No, look, these, these are the projects that we've been waiting on. I mean, this is, this is all good stuff, good stuff.
Marlon and I are gonna have to have a tennis match.
We'll wait to start playing tennis when that is over.
Yeah.
There you go.
Make it soon, 'cause.
All right, moving on to five D.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-three, approving certificate of substantial completion for the Louisiana Pepperplex Artificial Field Turf Project, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Okay, let's see, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselaar and Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item?
We do have some photos of the completed turf.
Oh, wow, look at that.
All the punch lists was completed?
Uh, well, this is a substantial completion. This gives them the opportunity now to, to do the punch lists and complete it. This is the north fields, uh, last time, a few weeks ago, I was here for the south field, so these are the, who are considered the baseball fields, or the south fields with, uh, the softball fields.
This is beautiful.
So pretty, it doesn't look real.
I know.
Right.
Absolutely beautiful. Really nice.
Yeah, we were impressed with the way it turned out. And these are the T-ball fields, we have three T-ball fields too.
Yeah, which is cool.
Very nice.
And they actually can double as practice fields when teams are warming up, they can do grounding exercises and things like that.
And Richard would shoot me if I didn't say this, we have one field that we had to cut out that's not turf, okay? And it was a hundred and fifty thousand round figures, okay? I know when they have to remobilize to come back, it's gonna be more, but Richard was banging my head about it today, that as tournament play starts picking up and those things, we're gonna need that other field. Nobody's gonna wanna play on the one grass field. So, he is banging his head, and, uh, I think there's a few things that he's trying to, uh, he told me about one, maybe he'd save fifty thousand dollars with one item that we talked about today. He's trying to put off hiring people, and he's cutting the grass, and he hasn't hired anybody else, and he's like, okay, total up how much money I'm saving with that. I mean, he is really trying to find a way to get that other field done. And, you know, like I told him, time's on your side, you know, if you can make it till new budget in November, and you've saved fifty, and we save fifty from some other things if that happens, you know, it's, it's a big if. Since, you know, we'll, we'll try to get there, but I promised him I would bring it up, that, you know, there is one more field that at some point, just to really host those tournaments. I mean, he came up with a concept today, and he says, we wouldn't even have to do tournaments. You could rent the fields. Broussard and Youngsville is so popping, they would come over here and pay a hundred dollars a field to practice.
Wow.
So, he was in the corner calculating the money of, well, what if we just let everybody practice? So, he's working on it. I mean, we got the right guy, but, uh, I just wanna pass that on.
That's awesome. Is that what West End Field's gonna look like too?
It'll be natural.
Yeah, right.
But it will be painted and everything like that, yeah.
I'm just messing with you. Although, we'll have to get some money for that in the future.
Ain't never no.
No bank street costs.
I like natural.
You know, actually, a lot of, uh, ball players on the collegiate and the high school level really like the natural too.
Turf's hot.
Yeah.
Turf is pretty, but you can get into fast on turf.
I've only played on natural stuff. Cool.
Any other discussion?
Little kids, the older.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Little kids.
And I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
I caught that laugh.
Thank you. All right, five E.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-four, approving certificate of substantial completion for the Louisiana Pepperplex, Pepperplex Sports Field Lighting Project, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yep.
Yeah, pictures of that, good.
Yeah, oh, that's it, yeah.
Okay.
It's in a black background, so.
Good.
Okay. That was taken at night.
Yeah, those are taken at night.
That's nice.
I went out there when they lit it up.
Yeah, you saw it?
Yeah.
Haven't seen it yet, it's the photos.
Any other discussion on this one? That was good. Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Dave, we're gonna have to get you a chair, bro.
It's all right, sit down all day anyways.
Ricky, you not vote? Sure? Thank you, sir.
Didn't push it all the way.
Thank you all. Thank you, Dave. Uh, five F.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-five, authorizing the mayor to accept donations from AMTC Two LLC and PJ Allland Properties LLC of servitudes for the historic District Trails Project along Bayou Teche upon terms that he thinks appropriate, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselaar. Any discussion on this item?
So, this is the boardwalk area.
This is the sidewalk that replaced the boardwalk, that area.
Right.
Yes.
It's the, yes, it's the piece between Week Street and Rodbury Park.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the only thing I noticed that, I think they put the wrong address for the city on the contract.
Ooh.
It says three fifty-seven instead of four fifty-seven.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody was thinking about a gun. Any other discussion on this item?
So, we're gonna own that now, or for thirty years.
Yes, we will have the passage for thirty years, right away, you know.
For thirty years, yeah, right away, yeah. And then we'd have to get it renewed.
Yes.
When whoever's in the seats.
Yes. Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. Five G.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-six, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract for professional services with Staples Engineering and Consulting LLC for the City of New Iberia Cooley Cleaning Project as related to the American Rescue Plan Project, American Rescue Plan Act Drainage Cleanout Project.
Do you have a motion?
Go move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselaar and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. The, this is the arper money that we're spending to clean canals in the city, and, uh, we need to hire Chandler. Uh, Joe has been, and his staff have been working really hard on getting right aways. The ones that we couldn't get, we turned over to Jeff, and he is gonna write letters. We are trying to get all that done, so that we can start bidding this out.
Okay.
Uh, that's my hope, anyway.
What timetable?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh.
Is, uh, T-Bayou, uh?
Oh, it's in there, yes, sir. It's in there, they're all in there.
Only to the city line.
We, every, every canal that I can think of, you know, 'cause you've talked to me about that, Ann Street, uh, Peebles, M-ten, uh, you know.
There's one over there by where Brook is, Katie and Aker said.
Yes, yeah, that's all M-ten, and then, you know, if there's anything we gotta do at Armaco, I mean, we really trying to, the commercial, uh, we trying to hit all of them up to the, up to the city line.
Have we, have we talked to the parish about doing the other side, like on Ann Street?
Well, I gotta do mine anyway, so, uh, we will, we have in the past, and so, I think that we make a hell of a show when we start cleaning them. And, uh, there are many, Joe's been here for almost thirty years, and some of these canals, he's never seen clean on the city side. So, I think we, we get that done, and then I really feel, once we pull this off, you know, we will, you know, ask politely to the parish to, you know, pick up the ball and keep going, but they're ahead of us. They bought a long reach, and they have cleaned some canals. In other words, that was a push that they made a couple of years ago. Um, so, I can't say that theirs are, we have some that just have been neglected, we've never had the opportunity to do, but we'll all get them now.
Okay, that's great. I know the people downtown are gonna love it.
Yep.
They've been complaining about all that.
No, I know, and you look under that bridge, and it's, I mean, it's not good. If I could've got under that, I cleaned it already, but we don't have any equipment to, to reach there. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Five H.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-seven, committing to cooperative endeavor agreement for American Rescue Plan Act Water Sector Program Grant Award and committing to local match.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselaar. All right, any discussion?
We're on H?
Five H. What's that? Yeah, yeah, no, I know, it's, this is, this is, if you're looking, this is money for the, uh, sewer.
Yeah.
Right.
Our money for.
Yeah, this is the arper money that we're gonna put up with the grant money, right, the mansion money.
Right.
Okay.
For the five million that we're getting.
Yeah. That's good.
Any discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Five I.
We got some sewer projects coming now.
We got all kind of projects. All right, five I.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-eight, discuss and consider options for the proposed closure of the Deer Street or Caroline Street Railroad crossings, as repeatedly requested by Louisiana DOTD, and further authorizing the mayor to forward council action to Louisiana DOTD.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman Broussard. Discussion.
Yeah.
What is the, what is the motion to do?
Well, that's what we have to figure out, okay? We gonna work tonight.
We have three options here.
We have at least three options, and DOTD will not quit, I'm, I'm just gonna be blunt, they will not quit calling our office. They are asking constantly, the only reason they quit calling was, I said, I'll agree to put, I don't know what we're gonna do, 'cause I, I need my council to do that, but I'll agree to put it on their agenda. So, they said, okay, well, then we'll be calling you on Wednesday morning, but they're bugging me, okay? And my problem, it's not a problem, and, and I wanna reach a conclusion. Our road safety program, which is about a million dollars, we've been playing with for a year and a half, it is finally gonna come to bid. The Iberia Street repaving, we've been talking about that for two years. The frontage road is fifteen years, and some things have come up with the frontage road that they now want us to come up with two million dollars more, which we, which we cannot do, okay? Road safety, this pro- this program is seventeen years old. Hawkings Street Drainage and Resurfacing, that's ten years. New sidewalks on Main Street, a project that was completely forgotten about, that was applied for nine years ago, and now they're saying, well, maybe twenty-four, uh, so, what's happening is, I gotta figure out a way to get a better relationship with DOTD. And it's obvious, is the guy who runs this day to day, is that I don't have any, you know, we try. The local office, when I go to meetings about the frontage road, now they're starting to ask me about, you know, the other projects. And so, what's happening is, they're trying to, and, and they don't hold all the cards, they hold these project cards, okay? So, I'm trying to get to some conclusion, and then from there, I know we're gonna get a new director of DOTD. I got along well with Dr. Wilson, but I never got a movement on any project almost since I've been here. So, I realize I gotta reboot, so I'm trying to figure out a way to open some lines of communication and move forward with something, so that I can say, you know, what I'm getting the, the feedback is, you know, we, we're not very cooperative. Well, you know, I'm trying to be cooperative, but I need some projects, I need, you know, and I don't wanna be as I have been. Part of it is on me, when they kinda give me, well, what about this, what about that, I'm like, well, what about my fifteen-year-old project? What about my ten-year-old project? I mean, so I'm trying to develop a new relationship with them, start over and say, okay, we, we're gonna give you, I don't know what decision we're gonna give, and I, and I've never done this. We had a meeting that we had discussion item, and we didn't, we left and, and we really didn't, we just talked. We didn't come up with anything. So, my hope is, we could work through this and, and find, you know, a solution, or at least go back to them with something and say, you know, as, as a council, as a res- some kind of resolution.
Right.
Just to say, we trying to move forward. Uh, so, that's kinda my hope, whether we get there, don't get there, you know, it, it's, I just thought I would give it a stab, because, man, they are relentless of, you know, and they call Lainey every time, uh, but they are relentless with trying to give us, you know, an answer. And if we wanna give them no answer, that's fine too, but we just need to work towards something.
Do you think it'll affect the timelines on the other projects if we keep?
I'm worried about that. I, I, I'd like to say, okay, we gonna, we trying to work with you, you know, you work with us.
Right.
Um, and I can't wait, I'm probably gonna try to set up appointment and meet the interim director, but, uh, I sent a package to, it's another subject, and I'll just be very brief, I sent a package to somebody yesterday on the frontage road, because they moved the goalpost after twelve years, and now say I gotta come up with instead of two hundred thousand, which with this council's help, we had five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, thank you very much, so we were well ahead of the match, and now they tell me I need two million dollars more.
Wow.
Uh, I, I, and if that's gonna be how it is to do business with them all the way around, I wanna know that. And so, my hope was, we, we could come up with something and try to move the ball forward. So, I put down a couple of se- of, of options, but I didn't write an order, I was not gonna write a resolution without y'all. Uh, so, that's kinda what I'm trying to do. I don't know if it's gonna work, but that's.
So, we should walk away with the decision tonight?
If we can.
If we can, okay, so you can give them some answer tomorrow.
I would like to, you know, at least be working towards something.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought the Caroline Deer Street, uh, problem was taken care of. They were gonna leave Caroline alone and close Deer.
If we give them four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which is why I have that down as one option.
That, that, to me, makes no sense at all.
Well, I know, ma'am, but it doesn't make much sense to me either, but that, that's what they're, they're not, they're not saying we're gonna just leave it alone, or we just gonna, you know, they want four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've asked them if they would take less, we've asked them if they would reprice it. We said no, uh, in a phone call, uh, I, I'll just say, it was Mrs. Schubert, right? He said, you know, no other prices are coming, and that's the price.
Well, they don't have, you know, uh, crossing arms right now, so, what's the big deal? And if they don't wanna move the ones from Deer, leave it the way it is.
They, they're not gonna do that, and they won't.
And, you see, that, they just being, they just being butts now.
Well, but, I mean, it's who, it's.
I hate to say it like that.
Yes, ma'am, but it's who we have to deal with, so, uh, they won't come and arm the other crossings. I just don't wanna see a, you know, uh, I just don't wanna see an accident, and we have what? Now, Mr. Broussard's gonna know, is it five crossings to do? Five, okay, we have five crossings to do, and they won't come do the rest, 'cause I was like, we'll do the rest of them, and we keep talking about this one. Well, then, they not coming, so, we're, we're at a, a standoff.
Yeah.
Is where we are. But, but, but or no but, ma'am?
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
So, on option two, it's an estimated cost of five hundred thousand dollars. Do we have five hundred thousand dollars if, if we decided to do something like this? Could we find that money in the budget?
Not really.
Okay, so that option two is off the table.
In its, in its present form, yeah.
Okay. I'm just, you know, trying to clarify.
Right, hang on.
You know, what's available, I mean, what are the real options here, so basically, option one is the only other option here, the other one is just a discussion. So, we only have two options.
Unless we think of another one.
Okay.
Which we might.
Okay.
Ricky, Ricky, okay, hey, I'm, uh, taking traffic.
I originally had the floor too.
Oh, sorry.
So, the deal is, uh, right now, um, I'm at the point where, you know, it's been going on for ten, twelve years, maybe.
Yes, ma'am.
Two thousand and nine.
Uh, seventeen years is when it was first.
So, this doesn't make any sense for them to start this now. And, um, when they decided to put Caroline on the chopping block, that was way back then. They haven't done any other, um, research or collected data like they usually do, you know, to even, you know, give this any real relevance, you know, to say this one versus this one, uh, allegedly like they did before. This is going on old data that they have and all, and of course, the people. And of course, the people.
I passed all that on.
On the street are, are, you know, definitely not in favor of it, and, and I'm not either. And it doesn't make sense for them to try to force the city to do something that the city doesn't really want to do. On all the, 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 you know, all the resolutions, resolutions previously that we've done, we've said that we don't want any closed.
I've sent all of those resolutions.
Yes.
Asked about the, the counts, I've asked about, you know, and they're, they just taking a hard stance.
Well, we can take a hard stance too, and, you know, tell them where to go, actually. Uh, I mean, I mean, this is our city, it's not their city. You know, and most of the times, especially the railroad, they don't keep up their property. They have all kinds of stuff that could be done, uh, they have a mound, uh, in, uh, Mr. Broussard's district, um, right past Dale Street, a big mound, it's a woods now. You know, but they're not doing anything with that. You tell them about different things, they don't cut the grass near there on their property or anything like that. So why should we then and, you know, do something that we don't feel good about? Because I'm definitely not gonna feel good about it, because they want to play dirty.
But they work with DOTD, and we gotta figure, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing, you, you make great points, I'm not arguing with you, and don't think I am, but I'm just trying to move the ball that we gonna have to try to do something.
So they're gonna hold up the, other five?
Yes, yes.
But then they may do it anyway.
Yes, ma'am, they're the, they're the.
They've been holding it forever already. So, you know, it's kind of like.
Hundred-pound gorilla, we, you know.
They got a little carrot, you know, shaking right here, you know, if you do this, well, we gonna do this, and then next thing you know, that's like Lucy and the ball, you know, with, with, with Charlie Brown. Every time she says she was gonna do it, they put, she put, pull it back.
Yeah, yeah.
I see that, I see that coming too.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm definitely not in favor of, of, of this.
Okay. Done for a minute? Can I, can I?
You can move on, I guess.
No, yes, ma'am, and I'll come back to you, you know that. Yeah, for them.
I think, I think, Deidre made some good points, but, I mean, a, as a city council and elected officials, we here to make decisions based on the whole city. And I, and I'm, I think the, the people in Caroline have a right to be concerned about their run crossing, but when, when, when the railroad company and the state starts talking about public safety, and that we're holding up a public safety issue, that, that creates a little bit of exposure, right, Jeff? Down the road, could, potentially.
Could, but I mean, not necessarily.
But, so if, if.
Still on them.
Still on them, right.
Good.
But, that's a good thing, but.
That's good.
You know, I would hate to have, and God forbid, something happen at a crossing where we, you know, we holding up, you know, something to close it because of arms and crossings or other options, but, you know, with DOTD projects in, in Burlington Northern and the railroad company, they work hand in hand, and they will hold up projects based on one decision, so I think as a council, we look at the city as a whole, as a public safety issue, the right decision is to move forward the project. Now, if we look at Caroline, in the individual street, we know we don't have the money in the budget to move the arms, then, you know, we kind of cherry picking one street over the, the whole city, in my opinion. I, I think, I don't want none of them closing, really, but where they put us at now currently.
Five times.
Yeah, but, but where they put us at currently, they, they forcing us to play our cards, and since two thousand nine, and again in two thousand eleven, was brought up again, we, we keep kicking the can down the road, so eventually, we just gonna have to make a tough decision, and we good at that, and we can do that, and, and decide what we want to do, and DeeDee hit the nail on the head, you know, we don't have a half a million dollars right now to move crossing arms, so our options are pretty limited right now, and, um, uh, I think possibly, we really need to think hard about, you know, moving forward with their plan, so that we can leverage some other projects down the road, in my opinion.
Broussard.
In the resolution that we looking at, has, the state's been talking to you, Mr. Mayor, and myself too. DOTD has requested repeatedly that the city of New Iberia determine how it intends to move forward with this issue, and it is holding up other pending railroad projects. And the delay of these projects creates a public safety for the residents of New Iberia. We have three million dollars, I told you all at the last meeting, sitting there, ready to put up the other five locations, I have six up with federal money we got. We have five more to go. Three million came, the whole delegation came in here and gave the three million dollars to New Iberia, so that's five million dollars we brought to New Iberia, Iberia Parish, to do some good for Iberia Parish for safety. So we have that. Dale Street, that's our gas, has arms and lights because of some of this. You've never had them before at Dale Street, yeah, we got a mound of grass, I see it every day, and I called up a bunch of years on them, and they come cut them.
No, they didn't.
But everyone, everyone has.
They have them.
Oh, they cut everyone till I see it, I, I have the floor anyway.
All right.
Everyone, everyone has had their, we're safe. Now it's time for the city council to unite and come together to resolve this issue so the Louisiana DOTD can continue with safety work in a timely manner. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for one of these three.
I think.
Okay. Make a motion now, one of these three we take.
And you, can you wait and let everybody? Have a little more discussion, if you don't mind, I'm trying to, I'm making this a working meeting, if you don't mind. I can't force you to do that, you can make a motion if you want.
I just want to get it in the clear, that all of this is for safety.
I understand.
Turn it. Train's coming through, twenty-five, thirty miles an hour. He can't stop, they've had many derailments this last month, bad. In the middle of town, they evacuate the whole town, I'm fighting that right now. The rails down the middle of town hasn't been changed. They old rails, I watch all that. They changed the rails from here to Generec and from here to Lafayette. But those old rails, I'm bothering the railroad company bad. Every time they have a derailment, I call them up. Don't happen in New Iberia or else, and a lot of people know about it, even on TV right here. That's old rails, and we had a derailment sixty years ago. I was a kid, in front of my dad's office, boxcars, everything twisted up down the middle of New Iberia. So it also had never happened. And Bank Street, they have arms and lights, how many wrecks we've had there? If that's the only arms and lights we got put up so far, which we have five others, that was a main one. So we have that in safety. On Bank Street, we'd have a curve in the track, six, seven, eight wrecks I know of, that were pretty bad. In the car, the car half a mile down the street, down the railroad, when it hit that bank, you know? Looked down there, way down there, before the train could stop. But that's just my say, it's all for safety, citizens. Like I said, I had an office right there, and I watched that train coming down from Generec, and it done, it wasn't too slow. So, uh, that's my feeling on this, let's get this thing to a vote and send it to the state. Let them come down and do what they have to do. We're not gonna say we want to close any. I don't want to close any. Nobody wants to close. But let them come back Lee and Prairie, if they have to close some to help the rest of them down the middle of town. Uh, come do what you have to do, Mr. State.
Yes, sir.
I'm getting a little old, man, I just need to recap. Reasons why these two streets were considered, I know Deer and, okay, so Deer and Caroline were two streets open.
They did a study, and they still hanging their hat. Uh, Councilman Ledbear's not wrong, that's an old study, but they did a study, and they came and they analyzed all of them and told us, these are the ones that need to be closed by the traffic count.
And we're going back to two thousand and nine on the studies?
Uh, it's either nine or eleven, it's no, it's no newer than that.
But some have been closed since nine oh nine?
No, they, when they did, Lee and Prairie, Lee and Prairie. Right, they were part of that study, and they came and put some of the arms and lights. And then said they would come back. Uh, no one thought they would have come back, I don't know, another fifty, yeah, ten years later.
Right.
But they want to come back and do the rest of them. They seem to have waited, and I can't prove any of this, but they seem to have waited to come back till they, because they do want to address the track through town. So they seem to have come back, as, as when we had presentations last term, they wanted to come back at the same time and do the arms and lights as they fix those rails, that, Mr. Broussard's not wrong, talking about they're old. So now they're ready to come back and do that, and they feel like the project's being held up, because they want to do it all at once. But they picked those streets from the studies they did years back.
Okay, so I'm.
We've asked them if they were gonna do new studies, and they said no. We've sent them five, uh, resolutions so far that says, we, we don't want to close anything. Um, and we just kind of at this impasse.
So initially Caroline was one of the streets that they said we're gonna close.
Yes.
But they technically never got around to it.
All these other ones, and so now they're coming to say, now we're gonna do it.
Were the other ones that hadn't been closed yet?
They closed some in the first, they closed some in the first.
They closed Lee Prairie.
Right.
They closed the one across the, from the, from the tennis court in the western park.
Yeah, yeah.
They closed that one.
Yeah, that was my shortcut, man, that was my shortcut.
A little bit, that was dangerous, that's actually not a street.
Yeah, right. Man, I used to take that as a shortcut all the time.
Somebody died right there.
And, and the one by the bulk plant.
Yeah, tractor flipped over right there, and they died, the guy was crossing it with a tractor, and he flipped over on that one. But all I'm asking is, so they basically held us, held out for years to close Caroline. Now, in that process, did Deer Street always have arms and light, or that was part of?
The study that they did years back when.
Study made them put lights at Deer Street.
Right.
Okay.
And then now they wanted to close, and Providence is gonna be closed, uh, Providence and Caroline.
So out of the study came lights for Deer Street.
Yeah, and they looked at it.
Initially, they didn't care about Caroline in terms of.
And they looked at it and said, you have too many crossings, and they have this magic number for every town that you can only have so many crossings. So when they come, they're coming to, to close, if they want to close five crossings, they gonna find five crossings. And it is the railroad who's making those decisions. And I think it, it comes down to maintenance, it comes down to, you know, uh, they say that it's, and it might be, I'm not saying it's not, but there's a ratio of crossings per miles of track and those kind of things, and New Iberia had many more, originally, New Iberia had many more than almost every other town.
So more or less. I still got the floor, you want to respond, okay, cool.
By closing Caroline and Providence, we get in Iberia weeks, jewelry, jewelry crossing arms put in, in French.
I understand, so.
So we close two, we get four, safety measures.
I understand, so the, the, the Carol, I understand, but the Caroline Street boycott.
Exactly.
Yeah, there you go.
Is, is holding up progress for those?
Yes.
And they said that?
Yeah, they're not gonna do anything, they're coming to do all the project at once.
Yes.
And this is about overall public safety, me and my cousin was, uh, laughing today about some other stuff in Youngsville, in the family. And he said, uh, you know, protection of the general public, you know? So I just, I just thought about that, so, uh, but.
I don't, I don't have any of that.
Boy, God, that's what it is.
I understand.
None of them need to be closed, and.
Hang on, Mr. Broussard, uh, I'll just ask, Dustin, you're the only one that didn't speak, do you want to speak before I start the roundtable again?
Ah, I mean, I, I agree with everything Deidre's saying, we don't want to close any down. How, I mean, how many more, how many, how many times have we reached out with resolutions, support from this council to not close them? And they bucked back on us. So how many times are we gonna keep, like Ricky was saying, kicking the can down the road? I get it, I don't want to close any, but I'm also, like, DeeDee, I don't believe in taking money, or that we don't even have, really, out of the general fund to close a railroad crossing, just to close one railroad crossing, or, uh, put lights to keep it open, I'm sorry, keep them open.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm kind of torn on this one here, but, uh, I just don't see any other options, I mean, we can, we can keep going back and bring more resolutions to them, or speaking to them, but I don't think it's gonna cause the.
I do, I, I do have one idea, but.
You do?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's kind of off the cuff, but I'm trying to, I would like to, and I don't mean this in any kind of bad way, and I might not put it in the right way, okay? I'd like to call their bluff, and I'd like to say, okay, we doing something. But my role is to think about the whole town. So I have to think about the people in Caroline and Deer, because I represent them. Uh, I, you know, I have to think about public safety for the whole town, okay? And I just want to move the ball forward and say, okay, DOTD is back, is back on you, all right? So I have one idea, because, because really, we kind of broken into two camps, okay? Of, of get it over with and, and just go, and I don't want to spend any more money, because we don't have a lot more money, or, you know, we gotta save Caroline. And we just gonna keep telling them no and hope that they'll, they probably just gonna come and run over us at some point anyway, which I kind of thought they would have, if you wanted them a God's honest opinion, we've sent them no five times, and really behind the scenes, even when I was the pro tem, I just thought, yeah, they just gonna come and do it, because they, they really can, okay? Well, they haven't, all right? So one alternative, and I'm just trying to, look, y'all might all get mad at me, okay, but I'm trying. One alternative would say, all right, I'll split the baby with you. I'll come up with two hundred, half, it's four hundred and fifty thousand. I'll come up with, I, I'll call your bluff. The city in New Iberia will come up with, if, if you would agree, and it's just a thought, I'll come up with half the money, okay? That pains me to do that, because we shouldn't have to do that, okay? I really don't like doing that. But I'll come up with half the money, so let's just say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I'll come up with half the money, you meet me half, and I'm just saying as a city, you meet us halfway, and we put the arms and light at Caroline, and you come do the rest of your project. What other community has put up, and we do have to do that, we have matching money on projects all the time, now, matching money on a half a million, you know, would be a hundred, we going, we, we, we going a fifty percent match. But we'll give you half the money, now you shut up and come do your job. Uh, you know, quit being a but, as, as Councilwoman Ledbear had said, okay? So that would be kind of a weird option that I don't think we've tried. But if we pass that in a, if, if you'd be willing, if you vote no, we'll have to try to think of something else. But if we send them, or we, we haven't sent them any resolution except, no, we don't want to close anything. So call their bluff. My, my thing, sitting here, listening to y'all, watching y'all struggle, y'all all make great points, y'all all on my team, I, I, I'm in everybody's corner, and, and I feel that y'all in mine, and, and that's why we excel. So let's call their bluff and do a resolution and say, here, big boy, here's in writing what we're willing to do. It shows our people, we're trying to pony up for them, and it calls their bluff. No other community's doing that. So we'll give you half the money, you come, you arm and light Caroline, come do the rest of your project. If not, we just gonna say no forever. Now, on the flip side, we have to come to a conclusion. So, you know, you could say, we'll put up the money, and we'll meet you halfway. If you're not willing to meet halfway, th- then, then we're gonna, we, we're back to the same problem, we're back to, do we add on, well, then we're just gonna close it, do we add on that we're just gonna say no forever? Do, you know, that, that's the struggle. Uh, I, I think that we offer them a carrot, and then we have to decide as a team, as a unit, you know, what's the next part of it? If they don't meet us halfway, I mean, at some point, I don't have five hundred thousand dollars. I really don't have two hundred and fifty thousand, and, uh, hope Kevin is not in here, because we'll have to get creative to figure out where I'm gonna take the two fifty from.
So that was gonna, that's gonna.
I don't know where I'm taking it from, it might be the general fund, I might have to come back to y'all and say, okay, I don't want to do this, it pains me to do this, I have nine hundred thousand dollars set aside from CAREZAC that is really for grant matches, okay? And if you figure two hundred thousand, we have been very successful at taking two hundred thousand and turning it to a million with our grants, okay? We wouldn't be leveraging our money that far. But, you know, if I had to, I'd rather take it out of the general fund if it's healthy enough. Uh, if it's not, I might come to y'all and say, would you, you know, would you be willing to take it out of that money? That, that we could take two hundred and fifty thou, or we could take half out of the general fund and half out of that money. Um, those are two pots that, and I'm doing this on the cuff, but those are two pots that, that we could consider, um, as a way to do. Uh, do I realize that the ARPA money fools you, because we're spending, you know, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars tonight, but that's a one-time thing? Can we continue to, to throw money at every one of our problems? No, that's gonna become a stopping point. Uh, and as we leverage more money and, uh, float more bonds and float more things, we do have to tighten up, I mean, I realize that. But two hundred thousand is not the end of the world, two, two twenty-five is what I'm hoping. It's just a suggestion. Uh, you know, so if, I don't have another one, but trying to meet in the middle and say, this would be a way to send them something that says, okay, you want something? Here you go, you get it on Wednesday morning, what you gonna do? And it's better than a no, it's not quite as good, it's just, you know, we're not rolling over, uh, it's somewhere in the middle. So if, 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 and if you got another idea, that's what I want, I mean, you know, I, I, that's why I love this council, you know, help me think of something else if you think that that's not good enough. But I do think we need to send them something. Yes, sir?
Based on what I've been hearing from you and, and the correspondence between the deal, the railroad, basically, it's all or nothing, they don't want to.
But we've never sent, you, you, you're right so far.
They don't want to spend a dime.
We've never sent them anything except, nope, we ain't doing nothing. This would be the first time we would send them something and say, you know, they might well tell us no. And it might come to a point that we have to say, we give up. But it's, it's an effort before we give up. You know?
Okay.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I like that idea, because before our Secretary of Transportation retired, I did have a conversation with him, and he said that they would not be looking for us to come up with all of that money, but something to add to it, you know, to, to cover some of the costs, that was the last thing you told me.
I wish you'd told me that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that would have been nice.
That would have been nice.
But, um, you know, he's no longer there, somebody's gonna take his place, um, but that's what he was actually looking for, um.
Now, if that doesn't work, I think we just gotta give up, but, you know.
Or just call it bluff.
Okay. Uh, now, now we got some discussion, uh, who had their hand up first, Mr. Broussard?
And that money, two hundred and some thousand dollars would be, uh, to put arms and lights at Caroline?
Yeah, they, we'd come up with half, they'd come up with half.
And leave Deer alone.
Yeah, just leave, you know, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, remember now, in Generec, twelve, fifteen years ago, along ten, twelve years ago, they closed three crossings in Generec. I remember that when I was fighting to see what they were gonna do here. They closed three under protest in Generec. They left three open with, they left three with arms and lights, you don't hear any wrecks at all in Generec no more. You know, they had a bunch of wrecks over there, too, so I was just letting you know, it was being done way before they got to New Iberia. They'd abandoned that, they closed some, they have too many crossings. Generec had too many, for the size of the town. So they closed three, and they left three open. But it showed me they're a lot safer, you know, in that town when the train was coming through, but.
But we'd have all of them, or, you know, with arms and lights, which.
We'll have them all, yeah.
That's what I, I mean, that's my ultimate goal, is to get.
You think uh.
Didn't think it'd be this tough, but to get all of them.
The whole idea is if the state will move, even on this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But we're not gonna know unless we ask, you know? We're not gonna know unless we ask, or unless you'll have another idea, you know? Yes, sir?
I don't have another idea. I guess the co- comment, and I just wanna know, cuz I don't know. Miss Ledbetter, out of Caroline and Deer Street, which one is more traveled right now? Are they equally traveled? And how many houses, and are they equally of the same amount of houses on each street?
No, uh, Deer Street is the shortest street.
Deer Street is the shortest street?
Yeah, you remember on the, on the, on the trolley, yeah, I showed that.
But we didn't pass on Deer Street.
No, we just crossed over.
We crossed over. Uh, well, kinda sorta. We did kinda go down.
We did a little like this, remember?
Yeah, we went across that track, and then we turned off again. But, um, Caroline is much more traveled, um, and there's an older community there. Whereas on Deer Street, um, you know, you have more rental properties and, and things like that, um. The street is shorter, Deer is shorter. When they did that study way back, they didn't have the rehab center right there at the end of Caroline either. It was just a nursing home, um, on Byard Street. So, things have developed in the Caroline Street area, um.
None of them run all the way to Admiral Dollar, right? Caroline runs all the way to?
No, it goes to Adrian.
To Adrian Street.
But Deer doesn't go to Adrian. No, it goes to Bryan, which is a little cutoff street.
Yes, yeah, which is part of my, uh, dissertation, cuz. Yes, I, uh, my daddy got his masters, and my daughter got their masters. We get that all the time, but. I just think about it this way, I'm, I, a small part of me, I'm not a Republican, but a small part of me is a conservative. And every time I hear about spending money to fight, is, I'm, I'm scared of spending money to fight. But it's just a resolution, right? It's, we're not saying we spending this.
No, if we send a resolu-.
And they say yes.
If we, we send a resolution and they say yes, we are spending the money.
Spending the money, right, so.
If they say no, we're not. And it's just an option. I mean, if you, you think it's a bad idea, tell me.
I, I don't think, I, I'm not saying it's a bad or good idea, uh, uh, and I don't wanna say I care, you know, but it, or, or don't care. But, cuz. I get it. I had one closed in, 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 in my district, in, in my community. I didn't use that one much. I didn't. But I'm thinking about Lee Street, right? Funny story. My, my grand, my, my, my daughter's grandmother live on Lee Street. I hate not being able to cross the track to go to Lee Street, but guess what? I got over it. I got over it, however. I mean. Practicality is my.
Yes, ma'am.
I got over it. Speaking of Bryan Street, my daughter's best friend lives on Fontaloo. I would love to be able to come down. From, from uptown, from Hopkins Street, go down to Adrian and go straight to Fontaloo. But I gotta go all around Bryan Street and all of that. Put me a road from there to go straight to Fontaloo. Cuz Fontaloo is a man thoroughfare, but you gotta go thoroughfare, and you gotta go through all these roads. I'm like, why they don't have a road cutting straight? You follow what I'm saying? But I got over it. So, that's just my comments. I, 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 I don't wanna, I, I don't, you know, I'm not against it, I'm not. You know, cuz I think, I like the option as well. But, uh, I, I'm not about fighting the federal government. I'm not about, about fighting the railroad. And I'm not fighting the postal service. Those three people ain't going nowhere, and they do what they want. Cuz I asked some people, yeah, I asked some people about the post office. I had people when I first got on. Cuz you know, a lot of neighborhoods have their post, their mailboxes across the street from their house, and people say, I wanna put mine on my house. You know, so I don't have to cross the street. Where the mail person say, well, I want him where he at, so I don't have to cross the street. That's the winning, the postal service. So, it, there's just some organizations and entities in this country that you cannot beat. So, sometimes we may have to join them and come out saving. But that's just, I'm not ag- I'm not against that option. I'm definitely gonna support, you know, I, I wanna support my councilmate and what she wants for her district, you know? But, uh, I'm just gonna be honest, I'm not falling on a sword, and the sword is two hundred and fifty thousand. I'm not falling on a sword to fight the, the railroad. That's just me. Or, and the railroad and DOTD.
Right. Okay, who had their hand up next? Uh, Councilman?
Sounds like a great idea, but we mentioned that we weren't even sure where we'd get the money from if they said yes. So, we're gonna send them this, okay? They said, okay, cool, we, we'll do it. But where are we gonna get the money from? Now, we got to start brainstorming and figure out how to get the funds just to keep it open. So, that's another, might, might be another hurdle that we're gonna face. So, just throwing it out there. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, whenever you have, when you spend money when you hadn't planned to spend it, there's an opportunity cost there. Because obviously, the money could be used to do something else.
That's why I brought it up.
And so, um.
Thousand could be leveraged for, you know.
It could be leveraged for a million, but, um, we do have a lot of citizens on Caroline that could potentially need to have that. Um, crossing open. I, I can tell you that they're not interested in closing Deer, because I talked to Dr. Wilson as well. And he said, they tend to not wanna do, close anything around low-income areas. And he felt like that was a, Deer Street was a area where they had a lot of low-income residents. And they would not consider closing Caroline, I mean Deer, for that reason. Yeah, that's what he told me. At, at, yeah. So, I, this is a tough one, because we, I mean, Councilman Ledbetter has a legitimate concern. I absolutely wanna support her as well. It's just that we're kinda between a rock and a hard place here.
We are. That's just the first time in six and a half years I bring a resolution that's not finished, cuz we are between a rock and a hard place.
It's, it's a tough one, because DOTD is, on one hand, is saying, we're not gonna close Deer. So, if we're not gonna come up with the money, I mean, we have to be committed to giving up that two hundred, whatever, twenty-five.
Like it as least as possible.
Yeah, or the five hundred, or we have to move on. So, I don't know where we, everybody stands. I mean, I, she has legitimate concerns.
She does.
I just feel like we're in a ru- between a rock and a hard place, and as a council, we gotta come together and make a decision.
Make a decision, because it is, you know, anyway, that's our job.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir?
You know, I think, really, I applaud all my colleagues. I think Councilman Ledbetter has, you know, I would have the same concerns in my district. And DeeDee, great comments, but, you know, when, when the leader of our town says, you're gonna fire two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the cuff. I, I'm fiscally responsible for this, the taxpayer and this money. I'm not gonna spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars unless we got a budget in front of us. That's a quarter million dollars. And I, you know, you just don't go into whim in a council meeting overnight and come spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm, I'm not gonna do it. I mean, just last meeting, DeeDee said, well, why can't we get the money for that little short section of Iberia Street? He said, no, we don't have the money. That two hundred and fifty would do that little street in Iberia Street. You know, it would do that.
It would.
So, I mean, there's a lot of problems. You just said, you know, there's other opportunities to create. There's a lot of other ti- other opportunities for two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do I agree? I don't wanna close Caroline. I, I respect, you know, Miss Ledbetter and the constituents, but I really do wanna put arms and lights at all the other ones. I, I mean, that's my concern. I mean, I get closing one, I get four arms and lights crossings to save other crossings. So, I think that outweighs the, the, the cost and benefit ratio a lot. Uh, you know, sometimes we gotta swallow, swallow our pride and, and do what's right, but. I, I'm not gonna support spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars tonight, when it was just brought up one night without, you know, our financial director. And not really sure where that money's coming from. Uh, that's just a bit too costly for me tonight.
Ms. Marlowe, I mean, I do know I have it, but it's okay. I understand. Uh, Mr. Bruce Art, you were next.
The state already came. How many trucks got stuck on Lee, trying to go to the Conrico Rice Mill, Mr. Marlowe? I've seen a. I've seen a bunch get stuck.
Some of big trucks?
That was one big problem. So, Lee and Prairie.
Weren't you there?
You know, it was closed by the state, just came down, and bam, it's closed. So, uh, all we should be doing is asking the state to come do, put the monkey on their back. They're responsible for the citizens of whoever they represent too, you know, not just us. They represent all Louisiana citizens. Uh, I think, uh, if they're gonna come do it. They strong enough to come do it. I don't, I don't wanna close any. But, uh, I'm against putting up any kind of money we don't have on the books, you know, no budget money, and, uh, we don't see it on the table. It's a lot of money. So, let's let it go like it did in Generec and a few other places, and finalize this, and send something to them that's kinda final. That, uh, we tired talking this over and over, three and four meetings. That's over two months of, of, yeah. They're getting tired of hearing this Deer Street stuff, you know? And, uh, big way, I'll talk, I'll talk mine uptown, the ones we have, Iberia Weeks, Julia French, yeah, they yet to be done. The other five have been done.
Yeah.
So, uh.
So, so we back as we were in the beginning, uh, I mean, we haven't made a motion yet, and that's fine. But, uh, we split again on, you know, do we come up with money? Do we, uh, how much money? Cuz we wouldn't have to come up with, you know, you could make an offer that was less even. I'm just, you know. I threw it out there, cuz I needed some discussion. Uh, you know, did I look at my general fund balance before I opened my mouth? Yeah. Did I know that I have some other money that is in some pots? Yes, you know. I would never bring something that I didn't think I could. Uh, do I wanna write a check for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? No, not really. I really don't. Would I write a check for something? Yeah, you know? I just think we have to move, whether we tell them, we're not ever gonna make it, and, and, you know, it's another option. Whether we tell them, we're never gonna make a decision, so you do what you gotta do, which we have said in some roundabout ways, if we don't support closing any. You know, if you give me, I just gotta get these people off our back. Do we tell them, we're never gonna make, this council's never gonna make a decision, okay? That would be a decision, you know? That'd be a weird resolution, but you could make one. We will never make a decision, you know? Unanimous vote. See what you do with choke on that, okay? That, that's a choice, okay? It's a choice to put some money up and try the match thing. Whether I went too strong, well, maybe I did, okay? Uh, but we put up some money and try for that. Um, we say, okay, we're, we're, you know, we just going with the state plan, and, you know, that's it. But we're right back where we started from, so, uh.
How much would be a normal match?
Twenty percent, and I would be much more comfortable with twenty percent, okay?
Be like one?
A hundred thousand dollars, you know? And that would make me feel a lot better, but, you know.
That would, I would say.
I don't know if that makes anybody else feel better, you know?
To offer that.
And the less is better, but, uh, is that a motion? Are we to that point? I mean, do we, wait, Marlowe had his hand up, again. Yes, sir. No, that's fine.
And, and DeeDee brought up a valid point, and I actually thought about it when I heard it the first time I heard it.
Yeah.
Closing the street based on the, on, on, on the crime and the, the income, I thought about. I actually cringed. You know, I, I do, I'm, I'm the first vice president in NAACP, but that's not our fight. But I keep up with ACLU, American Civil.
Yes, sir.
Liberties Union and, and, and Urban League. I keep up with their stuff, and I knew it. I cringed when I heard, we'll close it, cuz it's, it's a lot of crime. It's low income, and I was like, no, 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 no. So, I looked at this staple, and I said, this staple mysteriously got on my desk. And I saw it's probably laying on Miss Sandra's stapling something and forgot it. But I like subliminal messages, and I'm like, maybe that staple's telling me to keep my mouth closed tonight. Until I heard you talk about it, and, and, uh, I, I wouldn't, that would definitely not be one of my reasons for wanting to close Deer Street. So that we can create a barrier for people who are trying to run away from the police, or run to freedom, or whatever. I would definitely not be in pu- in, in, I wouldn't be for that. I thought about it when it was said last time. I didn't say anything. Thank you.
And that's not really the, the, the reason.
It wa- it was, you know, it, it was brought up as an option, and I didn't, I didn't bring it up then, but since it's brought up tonight, I'm like, not for that reason. Not for that reason.
Yeah.
It's the truth.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
Those are studies, you know, uh, cherry topping and all of that stuff. You can't stop people, cuz they got on a white shirt and all that kinda, all that is. Yeah, you'll catch a lot of people, police, if you stop them, cuz they got on a white shirt and T, but you cannot do it. It's illegal. And there's some things that just are illegal, and I think that's teetering. But you didn't, nope, that was just a suggestion. So, right? No, we're not doing it for that reason, but that was a suggestion that we threw out, and I was like, no, that can't happen. So, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cuz I thought about it last time. You heard it last time, too? Okay. I didn't know Dr. Wil- I didn't know Dr. Wilson, you had a conversation with him, and he said that wouldn't be a good reason to. So, we'll stick with the develop, I heard development. Caroline has developed. So, if this is going to help develop Caroline and develop that in a town, then I'd be for that. But, you know, not to, uh, hold back on the underdevelopment.
Do we know, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know what the study said about Deer Street versus Caroline? I mean, did, does Deer Street have more traffic?
At the time they did it, Caroline was selected because Deer Street had more traffic, and Caroline was selected. They, they really did counts.
Okay.
I don't know who did them, you know, but they, they did them.
And they never started data.
Okay, alright. I was just wondering, cuz I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's, um, I mean, do we, we don't even know if that's still the case, or?
No, they say that's what they're basing their decision on, but, you know, they're not coming to do it.
Late, late, they were gonna, their latest thing I've heard, they were gonna put a road right along the railroad track to tie in the Fontaloo. And they had to close Deer, but they didn't do that.
Nope.
Now, they said it was too far. Said this many a times right here. It's too far down Fontaloo, three quarters of a mile. I measured it. Turn on a little narrow road to go back to Deer, the big fire trucks.
Yeah, that wouldn't work.
And come back. That's the biggest thing that they put at the end. They made another study themselves for the safety of Deer Street. The fire truck can get on Deer and go straight, go do what they have to do, the ambulance, but they have that loop. They can't do, they can't depend on that little street to turn on and come back up three quarters of a mile to the fire. Or to the person dying. But they were gonna put a road right along the railroad track. They had to land and all. But they decided not to do that. Then, all of a sudden, the arms and lights were up. But, uh, they talked to me about it for two or three months before they put the arms and lights up, about a road maybe. But that was, the biggest thing was going down Fontaloo, three quarters of a mile to turn right on that little street. Then come back up three quarters of a mile for a fire or somebody dying. You know, that's just practical sense. And putting arms and lights there. Safety.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mayor, perhaps instead of the two fifty, maybe we do the twenty percent match?
I, I like that better. I mean, I threw it out there to see what was going on.
Yeah.
Uh, you know.
I mean, I think the two fifty.
I mean, some people still might say that's too much, and we don't wanna put up anything, but.
But we do have citizens.
Go in the hook, I'd rather go in the hook. Who wouldn't? I mean, of course, I wanna go in the hook for less, cuz I can use that money somewhere else.
Right. I mean, we're trying to protect citizens in that area. I think, I mean, I think I can get behind a hundred thousand dollars to help. The citizens, taxpaying citizens, cuz I mean, this is their money, um, you know, to have a better situation.
Any other comments? Questions, comments? I see y'all talking. No?
Well, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that we, um, we send a letter offering a hundred thousand dollars. Which would be our normal match in order to, um, put the crossings at, at Caroline Street.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor.
I'd second it.
I'll second.
I would se- I'll second.
Motion and a second. Uh, Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Discussion on, we finally have a motion to discuss. Discussion on this motion. No, I mean, that's the way the game works.
Yep.
So, on this motion, is there any discussion? And there should be.
Which is, it's a different discussion. It's a hundred thousand dollar discussion.
Right, no, but it's, 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 we have something to talk about. We finally got to the point that we have something to talk about. Which is what I really wanted tonight. At least we, we moved. Whether you agree or disagree is following. Any discussion?
I still.
Yes, sir?
I still think that, you know, we've been battling this battle for a long time. And, and to come in this meeting and then, you know, offer more money for something that they're trying to provide for us. For fifteen years, they said they would do what they do, that, that the money that Mr. Bruce Art, you know, retained. And, and I just think offering more money towards, towards that solution is not the way we need to go. I think they either do it or don't do it, based on an analogy of the study. And, uh, to come in here and just change a, on, on resolution and all, all of a sudden paying another hundred thousand dollars. And to me, it's not fiscally responsible.
Okay.
And it's just my opinion. I, I, I'd like to keep it open, but I think like DeeDee said, you know, we kinda backed into a corner. And, um, and, you know, we gotta make a decision, not that we all agree on it, some of us might disagree on it, but, you know.
No problem.
I think, I think that, uh.
That's what we do.
And, and when we saying that we're making a decision for Caroline, basically, we, we, we're talking about the residents of Caroline, but. A lot of us forget to reason with ourselves, and what about the people in St. Jude and Julia and Weeks? They're waiting on arms and lights. So, so we representing those people too, and we can't keep holding up.
It's my, it's my reason to try to make something happen.
Yeah, we can't keep holding up the citizens on that end of town. Can't keep holding up the citizens on that end of town without, you know, without doing something, and so. And so, so if we pass this hundred thousand dollar resolution and you send it and they say, no again, we back to square one again. We gotta come back and vote on moving forward, closing it. So, I mean, you called them, they said, nope, four fifty or no, right? That's what they said, four fifty or nothing. So that, I take that as either you're gonna close it.
Said the price wasn't changed.
Okay, I, I take that as they either gonna close it or you're gonna bring the four fifty to the table. So, I mean, not, not that, not that they might not come and D O T Ds come to the meeting immediately in the middle with a hundred thousand. I highly doubt it, cause they very hard to negotiate like, like we talked about, but, uh, I just think that's not the way I feel we need to go.
Yes, sir.
I'm not great.
Okay.
I'm physically responsible to the people, um, the state. I talked about service roads. Could almost got the state when they put the I forty-nine through to come do the service road, you know, but it won't cross the railroad track, whatever they have to do. I feel the same way, if they gonna come gradually do I forty-nine, you gotta do the rest. They gonna come do what they have to do and they know we have a safety problem, they gonna fix it regardless. Uh, I need to be physically responsible for the citizens. I think they gonna do it regardless. I don't know if they're gonna accept this offer anyway and we stuck.
I don't know that either.
We stuck back originally, tell them we're not gonna close anything. And hey, send that resolution about, we never ever commit.
That's the one he wants.
We never ever gonna commit to closing a crossing. Send that resolution, change this a little bit up if you can. But, uh, put that, we never ever, so y'all gonna have to, I, I told them on the phone that myself.
We might never ever get our other projects either, so.
I'm sorry.
I know, we know, we, I'm just giving you as many.
Whatever, y'all getting more politer than I do.
Yes, sir.
I'm, Miss Ledbetter's hand was up first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Well, regardless to, you know, if we, if we approve, you know, go with this, um, resolution for the hundred thousand dollars, that still doesn't say that they gonna do the project they supposed to do. They haven't done it for fifteen, sixteen years now. Um, you could be, we could just be wasting our time again, you know, doing what they, doing what they want, want us to do. Basically close something and then nothing's done anyway. So was, you know, it, it, it's.
But it is the only game in town, it's all we got, it's all we got. D O T D is all we got.
Well.
No offense.
I'm just, I'm just saying that, um, sometimes they, they, they kinda make you do a little something and then, you know, like I said, we're, we're loosening the ball. Here's the ball, you know, I'm, I'm gonna hold it and I'm gonna let you kick it, but nope, I lied again. And that's the way it goes sometimes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and, and being physically, physically, fiscally responsible, yes, we have been. We have been for a long time, but we do have that money and a budget that we could use to do this with.
And I checked, I have it in the general fund too.
And I'm finished.
Okay. Yes, oh, yes, sir.
Thoughts just keep popping.
Good, that's what I want.
Good thoughts tonight, bro.
Always, always, man, listen. I, I, this is where I'm going with this one, I see why people don't like government. I see.
You're right, I do too.
Cause, you know, we're sitting here an hour talking about how to, how to beat the railroad.
Which we probably can't, but we have to try.
How to beat the railroad.
Job to try, try to work this out.
But I guess I, I guess I'll probably, uh, I'll go with the, uh, with the gambling chief and see what the hundred thousand dollars can do. And then wait on them, uh, you know. But it, it's definitely, I'm, I'm kinda at impasse because it's definitely, they closing one or the other of two railroad crossings that are not that far apart. See what I'm saying? So it's kinda like, we're telling, and I'm gonna say the federal government, we're telling them that, oh no, we, we need two railroad crosses in this area. I don't care what y'all say, we need two railroads crossing in this area, you know? And they're saying, no, y'all don't, we studied, and I know the biggest deal is the time that it took, the time that it took. That's what we really mad for, that the time that they ain't done nothing yet. But, uh.
And the study's old.
Yeah, and the study's old, they not gonna do another study, right? Cause they, they. What they swear on their study, you know? It's older us, it's not, it's probably the same study they've been doing for a hundred years. You know?
They come out with their own.
Yeah.
Data.
So, no, that's it, I just wanted to, uh, say that I, I, I mean, I, the match is kinda what we've been doing, matching, you know, but.
I didn't say it was great and I don't really like it, but it came to me, so I thought I would throw it out there that it was a compromise.
Like I say, it's a, it's a good compromise.
My mayor pro Tim thinks I'm being too wild or not, but it's, uh, you know.
It's a good compromise.
I want the public safety, my reason for saying I would invest some money, I want the public safety, I want the other arms and lights as fast as I can get them. And I want to try to get some relief to start negotiating on all these other projects and get them moving. And I feel that I'm at a, a disadvantage than other communities who, uh, have just cooperated and said, so if it cost me a little, I, I'm, I'm paying for my sins. It cost me a little money to get back in the game and maybe move this ball forward so that I can go to Baton Rouge and see about moving these other projects forward and, and be a partner, that, that's what I'm trying to do. And that's my whole motivation, I don't like giving money away, but, uh, that's my motivation is that I get the public safety of the other crossings. Are we gonna be at this standstill for I don't know how long? I think it's just gonna continue and, and they just, you know, nothing's gonna get done. So for this public safety and the fact that I got other projects that we really need to get the ball moving on, is why I'm even attempting this.
I feel like I should've listened to the stapler, but.
Yeah, I hear you. Many nights I go home after these meetings in which I was stapled myself.
But, but again, we're talking about public safety, we're talking about the public safety, but the re, the, the, the people who are charged with making us safe concerning railroads, highways and byways of saying, or they're saying, trust me, guys, this is gonna make y'all safer. And we're saying, no, it's not. These people love this road, they need this road.
On the flip side, they really thought that that was all it was about, they'd have come and done it already.
That's it.
Well.
I know, I know that lady on that corner that, I think she died.
Yeah.
Lady on the corner, man.
By Yara.
Ms. Annabelle.
Ms. Annabelle.
She'd be flipping over in the grave either way we talking right now.
Yeah, you're probably right.
And she was something else.
Oh, yeah, I liked her. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor and we've discussed it, is there any other discussion? Okay, and the motion on the floor is, uh, that we would put up.
Hundred thousand.
The twenty percent amount, up to a hun, up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Good, good, okay, then, uh, everybody's clear? I'd ask you to please vote your machines. So it comes down to me, okay, well. I think we gotta try. I gotta get this done. I am glad we reduced the price, I'm glad that we had this discussion, uh, but I'm sending them something, so I'm, I'm voting. Three of you will be happy and three of you won't, uh. Can, can Dustin make a comment?
Yeah, you can.
Before I vote? All I get to do is, I'll get to amend, all I get to do is vote.
I don't, I don't think so, I don't know.
I don't know how it works, yeah.
Because the way Robert Ruler.
Well, I had to bring more ties.
The order is set up. That you don't persuade the.
You can't make a comment after the vote.
I, I think you vote.
Yes, you can't make a comment.
I think the voting has started, you finished the voting.
That was, that's what the Robert Ruler order set up for, is that right, Ms. Parliamentarian?
Yeah, after the vote is done, he can say what he wants to say.
After the vote is done, okay.
But he hasn't voted, so he can't say it right now.
He said he voted.
That's fine.
Nope, well, he hasn't said it out loud.
Yeah, yeah.
You vote yes?
I vote yes.
Okay, cool.
I vote to send the offer.
Alright, excellent.
Alright, thank y'all, good discussion.
What you wanna do, wanna say something, Dustin?
Now, if you wanna talk, you can, sure.
All I'm saying, if it comes back and they say that we can't, they're, they're not doing, still not doing anything, we're gonna close it, right?
Yep.
We won't have a choice.
I'll vote to close it.
You'll vote to close it then?
You know, if, if there's another tie, remember, that's the only way I vote.
At that point, I'm with Mr. Bruce.
Cause I don't, I'm with, listen, we're gonna keep talking about this.
Never gonna close it.
Well, the only problem is, is that we don't wanna cause a problem with our other projects.
Exactly, that's my point, that's my point.
If they say no, if they say no to this, then my, and it's just, I don't, I don't vote unless there's a tie, okay? But if they say no to this, then I say we close it because I am jeopardizing too much.
Correct, yes, sir. You make it simple, when you send a letter, see if they don't accept it, you close the crossing.
Yeah.
Well, no, we don't wanna put that in there.
No.
Don't put that in there.
The options, if they don't take the hundred.
Oh, I think we're gonna close it.
Gonna close it anywhere.
I know, but we don't wanna say that in the letter.
No, we don't wanna say that.
You gotta come back for the council again.
That's okay, come back, I'd rather them come back.
Just selling, you have to come back for the council.
And we'll do that.
But that might be a resolution that'll pass in less than an hour.
Yes.
Thank all of y'all.
Still gotta do a budget amendment, you gotta still bring a budget amendment.
I know, I know, they got to say yes, if they say yes. Okay, well, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Any other discussion after the pass? It's fun, I mean, look, I'll stay here all night. Uh, this is our job, this is game day. Alright, five J.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-nine proclaiming April tenth through fourteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Community Development Week in the city of New Iberia.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilman Dustin Swier, is there any discussion on this item?
So are we gonna do something or we just declaring it?
I think we're just declaring it.
Okay, maybe next year we'll be ready to do something, have a community party or something.
Okay, any other discussion?
At the open railroad crossing.
Alright, Dustin.
That was good, uh, please vote your machines.
You can get in trouble.
Nah, there's no trouble here. Five K.
Resolution number twenty-three dash forty, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract for professional services with C H Finstermaker and Associates LLC for the city of New Iberia, Louisiana Watershed Initiative slash Acadian Acres Tension Pond Project.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Martin Lewis and who is the second?
Me.
Uh, oh, Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on this item?
So they're just, they're not doing the work, they're doing.
They'll do the engineering.
Engineering work.
Just like our, they'll do our design, our, they've already done it. Basically, they put this whole project together, uh, I, I pulled it out the vault, they, they, we spoke with them, all the, you know, engineering's really all done.
Okay.
So, uh, but they'll be the engineer and they'll handle it and then we'll bid out the project, our normal steps.
So why do we pay them? Why are we paying them if it's already done?
Yeah, but it's, uh, from two thousand and eleven and they're gonna get paid to do it again, I'm sorry. They might, I'm trying to negotiate not the full fee, but I mean, they did the preliminary, they didn't do all the, there's no, there's no construction drawings. What they did was a preliminary study to say that this would work. So I'm using that to, to, to move forward.
Okay, just checking.
Oh, that's fine, no, if I had a whole set of plans, I would, you know, you still gotta go back though, fair is fair.
We didn't have to give them ten percent though.
If it was a whole set of drawings. Any, uh, any other discussion? Then I'd ask please vote your machines. Thank you. Right, next item, where am I, five?
You're at six eight.
L, okay.
No, six L, five L.
Five L, five L, thank you.
Sorry, five L.
Resolution number twenty-three dash forty-one, awarding contract to E N L Construction Group LLC for the Sloman Theater Interior Renovations Project and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goslin. Hello, David, tell us about it.
Alright, so this is an interior renovation project for the Sloman Theater. Um, the apparent low bidder on the project is E N L Construction in the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred. And we're recommending that D Doug alternate to not be accepted. Um, I think the project was still within the budget, correct, Tony?
Yes, yeah, we're still in the budget and what the alternate was, we're not taking, we really wanted carpet tile because when people spill, you can pull up one tile.
Right.
And if you look, that's one of the biggest problems we have is that carpet has been abused, it's, it's really bad. So we were able, because the whole job came in budget, to keep the carpet tile in.
Excellent.
What you said, remove the D Doug alternate, no, keep it in, right?
To keep the tile in, not the D Doug, so that we have the tile in the project.
I got you.
Alright, got you.
Does this include like the new sound system?
No, I'm thinking of sound system, it's some interior painting, carpet, the stage is getting re-sheeted and there were some plumbing issues, modifications that had to be dealt with at the kitchen.
Okay, alright.
Anybody else? Okay, yes, sir.
Did we, she brought up the, the sound system, did we talk about getting updated sound system? Okay, so what are we supposed to?
We're gonna get some separate prices on that and then figure that out in the parks budget.
Alright, okay, so it'll be the parks budget, we'll work with, uh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, and I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Tic Tac.
Special Ordinance, introduction of Special Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three dash seventeen, amendment number sixteen, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect funds apportioned to inform the public about millage renewal for a road program and setting for public hearing on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goslin and who had the second? Uh, Councilwoman, thank you, DeeDee Ledbetter, any discussion on this item?
So this means we're gonna put it back in the ballot in November.
This means we are coming back in the fall to try one more attempt at no new tax burden to, uh, go after the, uh, road millage, which would be a millage swap basically, just like last time. We would pay off something and bring, bring it right back. We have to do a better job of educating our public because, uh, the desk on the sidewalk for three days showed me that many people really felt it was a new tax.
Right.
So I'm gonna ask you for some money as well, although I am being fiscally responsible, um, to.
You got, you can have a hundred thousand dollars once the railroad does it, I'll give you a hundred thousand dollars.
I don't need that much, but we are gonna ask for some money to educate our voters so that, uh, you know, we, we have a more positive outcome this time. We were very close, uh, it failed by a hundred and thirty-three votes, so we needed to convince sixty-eight more people. And, uh, with more effort, I, I think that we would be able to do that.
How many more?
Well, half of one thirty-three, you just gotta get half of them, so you gotta get sixty, sixty-eight of them, I think I'm right, anyway. Uh, so that's where we're on that, but that's what this is about.
Right.
Jason?
Educate, not advocate.
Ed, yes, sir, educate, educate.
Yes. So we're gonna have like a nice little road show?
Yes, we are, we're gonna, you know, the money that we will have to educate, we'll have enough to, to put on, uh, look at what we're doing with our, just as an example, look at our anti-violence program that has, you know, we're, we're gonna have to go this route with yard signs, uh, we'll have ads, we'll have, you know, uh, Facebook videos. I do think this time we should do some town halls, um, I think that was, uh, something that was lacking.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the point. Um, so that's, that's the point.
Okay.
I think this program needs to be the road show in steroids.
Yeah, I do too. I do too.
It's my, I'm making it simple, I just think it needs to be more vigilant than what we doing now.
Right.
I totally agree and it will be, uh, because, uh, again, we, we collect taxes for roads and we're spending that money. We collect taxes in the nineteen sixty tax that is paying for the bond of the twelve point five million that we're spending now. But we cannot go further unless we, we find a, a new, a new funding source. Or use this funding source that's here, that's not a new tax burden, pay off, you know, uh, the millage and bring it right back. Yes, sir.
Can you let us know, or the public know what millage that you're talking about paying off? Do you know which one that?
Yeah, Jay, Jason has that. Yes, come on, if you don't mind. Let him tell us. It's the same one from last time.
Uh, is, it actually is the same one as last time. There's a, a bond debt service millage, um, that is currently levied at six point.
Six point eight.
Eight, eight three, okay, six point eight three mils, uh, that would go away and be replaced by this one. So from a taxpayer perspective, it's the same net, same total millage regardless of how it's allocated. That millage can only be used for payment of debt service. As adjusted, the new millage, if approved by the voters, would be used for road improvements throughout the city. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You had a question?
Jason, I mean, I, I think I mentioned it Freddie, but the language, any idea what the language is gonna read? Cause I've heard, and I know you do a great job what you do, but I've heard multiple comments from last time that the language is very confusing. And very, uh, just couldn't, couldn't get the message across what they read.
Understand, uh, of course, unfortunately, our hand, well, and we're handcuffed a little bit on what we can say in a proposition, both by the number of words. And by how we have to legally accurately describe it. It's a lot easier for me to say. Six point eight three mils is going away, that can only be used to pay for debt service and a new six point eight three mils is going on the, the ballot. Or it's going on the, the, the tax roll that can be used for road improvements. But I can't say it that way within a proposition because that's a shorthand explanation, not a legal explanation. So we're gonna go back to the drawing board and, and revisit that. This would come before you, there's an announcement to be made in just a, a few items down. Um, but, uh, we'll present it to you at the meeting in May. And give you the opportunity to, you know, to talk through it. We'll, we'll provide it for you well in advance, so you have opportunity to think through it. Um, we'll do our best to be as plain English as possible. But again, you know, on these things, our hands are, are really tied with what we are allowed to say within a proposition. And it's not just us, it's the fact that it has to go before the state bond commission and secretary of state's offices as well. And the attorney general in order to get it approved to go before the voters.
We, we didn't like it last time.
No, I didn't.
I mean.
I know.
But our message don't have to be the same when we advocating for it, as a proposition. You can't, you can't say yes or no.
Educating when you're educated. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like anything else. You, you have a, you have a budget ordinance that is going to have, you know, thousands of line items on it. Um, throughout, that, uh, you know, regular citizen is not going to pick up and understand what those things mean. But you can provide a budget message that goes along with it that says, hey, this is what we're actually doing and this is what it means. And that budget message is going to be far more important to the general public. Same here. Getting the message out of what you're actually doing is gonna be, needs to be far more important than what the proposition actually says. And, and, you know, understanding again that we're gonna draft that proposition to be as, as plain English as possible.
I'm done.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And the reason why I asked that, it's not, I mean, I wanted him to come up here, cause Mr. B's always talking about that camera right there. So that's why, I know it was the same as last time, but I wanted you to come up here and kinda redirect that message.
It's, it's, uh, uh, the question is exact, is asked the exact, exact right way. It is a tax that's being paid for one, for one thing that was no longer necessary. The tax, um, or, or will become no longer necessary and will be just essentially rededicated for another purpose. That will provide road improvements throughout the city as a whole.
Thank you. What's the election day?
Uh, October fourteenth is, is our target.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, that is the, uh, the gubernatorial primary.
And school board, oh yeah.
Parish. Is it school board also?
They were last year.
State representatives, state parish seats.
Ballot like that, yeah. So, yeah, it's gonna be a long one.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to really make sure our message is out there and clear because they're gonna hear a lot of noise over the next few months.
Everything that I got out of the, what we did so far is that we, we have to get a better, clearer message out.
It will be a decent turnout for that one.
And, cause there's gonna be a good turnout.
And, and I'll, I'll note as well, just for your benefit, um, just knowledge going forward is that. Because these are special elections that, uh, special election that you would be calling, it comes at the bottom of the candidate election ballot. So you would be all the way down at the very bottom, so.
Okay, that's good to know.
It might help.
Yep. I don't know.
Oh, yes, at the bottom.
Exactly. It would be after those two?
Constitutional amendments?
Mm-hmm, cause you know they usually throw those in too. They confuse people.
They do.
People give up.
They do.
Uh-huh, and they stop right there oftentimes. They just, you know, I'm not click, voted already.
Yep. Anybody else?
Well, it's gonna be our job to educate.
It is, it is, and, and, you know, we need to take it serious, cause this is our last shot.
Yeah.
We're gonna end up that, uh, you know, we, we gotta, as it is, half the town told us yes, half the town told us no. We are running under the vibe of we needed to do a better job of educating people. Our road program will be ending and I think people are beginning to realize just how far we won't be able to go. Uh, so I am hoping that that all works to our favor. And look, we've done a good job of having a road program. This is what every other, you know, there's twenty-six mayors on that wall, that's what every other mayor did, they did a road program. Uh, we are trying to do more than that and to continue what we have going, it's, it's worth a shot.
Yeah.
And things will not get any cheaper. It will never get cheaper to do, you know, what we're trying to do. Uh, already and, and it's just how it is. From last year, if it had passed, our interest rates have, have, have rocketed up. To where our money's not gonna go nearly as far. And that's probably the case in the future. Costs will continue to rise and things will continue to cost more. So if we're gonna try to do this, now's the time to make another attempt. And then after that, I don't know about y'all, I don't know that I have the energy to make a third attempt. I think that this is it. This is, you know, we'll just have to say we, we gave it the best shot we did and we did a road program and we just can't go further. But I hate to be that guy that didn't try to, to do more.
Right, cause we definitely need to finish some more roads.
We need it, we need it. Remember, twenty percent of our roads are good, twenty percent are being addressed with the twelve point five and sixty percent need attention. Yes, ma'am.
Can you go out on the sidewalk again?
Uh, my plan is, I already have a calendar. And my plan is that I will be on the sidewalk in different parts of town.
Alright.
And try to get it out there and I thought that, that's already planned. You can, Lanny's all typed it up. I already have a schedule. Uh, that will start sooner than you think. And, uh, we are going to do, uh, that. Reached the voters and really got a lot of people, you know, face to face and I enjoyed it. So that's coming. And I think that that's part of what it's gonna take.
Mm-hmm, it will.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna set them up on the worst roads? You can set up your desk on the worst roads?
Well, you know.
Don't go to the nicest road, cause it'll be pointless, what I'm saying is.
They're like, my road's fine.
I gotta go with Mike Paul, yeah, I'm voting no, cause he fixed my road. I, uh, you know, I'll put it this way, I'll be visible and I think I need to. And we already taking pictures for, we're gonna have yard signs. There are potholes in them, just to tell you. Uh, so yeah, this is gonna be, uh, an informative, cause that's what it's supposed to be, educational. But people need to understand, uh, their choice and the fact that we don't have another choice. And the condition of the roads kinda speaks for themselves actually. But, uh, yeah, I think we'll be very visible with this one.
Good.
And I, again, you know, ask for your help because, uh, you know, this is our shot to keep this going.
And there'd be some private effort too.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Sure. Anybody else? Any other comments? Questions? Uh, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, six B.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash twelve and ordinance levying millages on the twenty twenty-three tax roll on all properties subject to taxation. By the city of New Iberia and setting for public hearing on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goslin and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Uh, any discussion? No discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much, Councilwoman's remarks. Uh, Councilman Lewis, I'll start on your end.
Well, Happy Easter and hope everybody have a great Easter this weekend. Uh, you know, I wa- I wanna thank our Savior's Church for coming out and doing their. Explosion in the West End Park this weekend. I wasn't able to go. Uh, we had a Aaron Trade Show in New Orleans. I gotta keep up with my profession for when I no longer do this. And you know, also I said I would, you know, mention something about what we got going on our campaign, uh, no more. No more silence, stop the violence. Uh, I think the campaign is going great. I've been getting great reviews. Hear a few little people saying, uh, responses or reviews. I hear a few people saying, you know, what is it for, but, uh. I think it's making its way through the community and, and, and I think it's making an impact, uh. That's all.
Congratulate our girls, LSU girls, in their first ever. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, I think we all said enough for our nation.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I passed too. Um, so I'd like to say Happy Easter everyone and also, um, remind everybody that on April twenty-ninth. We're having a certified in-person free homebuyer training. For anybody who's interested in buying a home, you'll get a certificate at the end. It's being, uh, presented by Louisiana Housing Corporation. This certificate is valid for two years. You can take it to any financial institution, uh, as a first-time homebuyer and you will not have to go to another training. Those trainings usually cost seventy-five dollars and up. And, um, you know, as part of, you know, you guys know my passion for our own. Housing, um, this past weekend, I passed my certification test. So that I am now certified to help people get USDA home loans. So if you are someone who's, and this is for low income and very low income individuals. If you're someone who thinks that you cannot buy a home, don't think that way. Even if you're on social security and disability, there's a program for you. Most people don't realize that the USDA also has, um, a government subsidy, so they pay part of the mortgage, you pay the part that you can afford. So, you know, forget section eight and all that stuff. Let's go and buy something so that we can actually own these homes and leave it for our children. So that they can build wealth in the future. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have none tonight, thank you.
Alright, uh, our clerk needs to read an announcement.
Announcement of public meeting, notices hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Tuesday, May second, twenty twenty-three. At five thirty P.M. at its regular meeting place, the city hall council chambers, four fifty-seven East Main Street, New Iberia, Louisiana. The city council of the city of New Iberia, state of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held. In the city of New Iberia, state of Louisiana, to authorize the levy of ad verum taxes therein.
Thank you. Uh, our next meeting is April eighteenth. And with that, uh, need a motion to adjourn. There you go.